Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting this evening, December 9, 2019. Will everyone please rise for the pledge to the elite flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Luise.
Present.
This evening we have no appointments, nor do we have any presentations this evening. But we do have a public hearing that is still open on the proposed local law prohibiting the sale of electronic nicotine delivery products in the village of Toccoho. This is something that we initiated about two months ago. And what we have done is, because of the litigation, we have decided to keep this public hearing open. However, we still welcome any comments from the public about this possible prohibition of these products in the village of Toccoho. Okay, and that would, Nunez said, I will make a motion to keep the public hearing open. Do I have a second?
I second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise. In favor. And that will bring us to the adoption of minutes of the Village Board meeting of November 18th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And this will bring us to the first opportunity for any members of the public to address the board on any agenda items.
That will be at the, towards the end of the meeting, Mr. Logan.
This is just agenda items right now.
Were they out there? Where did they want to go in?
Nope. Okay, not, no one. Let's see if they're out there. Okay, let's move on to resolutions. And resolution number one is authorizing free short-term parking in the business districts of the village to encourage local shopping during the holidays on all Saturdays beginning November 30th through December 21st. And this is something new that we're doing here in the village. Usually what we do is a few days prior to Christmas Day, we will put bags on the meter and allow folks to park here in the village for free. But what we've done this year because of the way Christmas falls in the middle of the week, what we decided to do, consulting with Chief Costanzo and the village administrator, David Burke, we said, let's do this on a Saturday. First of all, when we began this program on November 30th, it was a small business week or month. So we were trying to encourage, you know, residents or anyone to frequent our local businesses and not have to worry about parking. And also, the employees of these local establishments would have the ability to park in parking lots that are usually utilized for permit parking. So it was just something that we were trying to do, just to foster local business here in the village. With that being said, would anyone else like to make a comment about that? And we'll determine how successful it is, you know, of course, after the holidays and see if we'll continue with this program moving forward next year. So with that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And resolution number two is approving vouchers in the amount of $1,000, excuse me, $604,460.89. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that will, thank you. That will bring us to our discussion section here of the meeting. And that discussion item is the consideration to move the annual Toccoho Village election from the third Tuesday in March to the Tuesday next succeeding the first Monday in November. So is at this time, I will ask anyone in the public if they would like to address the board on this matter. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Tom Slogan, 31 Mainland Place, Tocco, New York. I work for the Board of Elections down here at Columbus Avenue and things and what have you. And my district happens to be District 13, one of the busiest districts in the village of Toccoho. We work a 16-hour day. Okay, sometimes we don't get a break for breakfast, lunch, or dinner because the flow of people is a constant flow of people. By you changing this thing, you're adding on more hours to our day. And I'm telling you right now, I'm doing it because I'm retired. I'm not going to be working 18 or 20 hours a day for one day with $290. You understand? It's just not worth it, you know? And, like, nobody really understands.
So, Tom, if I understand correctly, you're saying if, in fact, they move into November, you'll have a longer workday, is that correct?
Yeah, because nobody can leave down there until everybody's finished. That means if I'm done at 9:30, I gotta stick around and help other people get their paperwork in order for them to call in to give the numbers up and what have you. And that's the way it runs. You don't leave that place until everybody has completed their task. So I'm there extra hours whether I like it or don't like it. But you're not going to keep adding on hours to something, you understand? I feel that I'm being overutilized.
Okay.
And being taken advantage of.
What time do you start the day?
5:30 in the morning. I get down there at 5:15.
But I guess my question is, does it matter what election it is? You're still opening up the polls at 5, you're still there in preparation at 5:30? So regardless, you're going to be there at 5:30?
Because at the end of the day, is at the end of the day when you're bone tied. It's not at the beginning of the day you're bone tied, at the end of the day. And even sometimes I'm there helping what, clean up the, um, the, um, community center and helping put away the machines and things and what have you. And I'm not paying any pay for that or what have you, but he's not, I'm not going to let him do it by himself. So I'm just saying to you is that the way you got it set up is more conducive for the people. You're asking the people to sit longer. And a lot of the people you're asking to sit longer are seniors.
Tom, how long have you been with the board?
Over, over 19 years.
And can I just pose one question to you? How many, in the last 19 years, how many folks came up to you and said, hey, you know, why do we need to come out here in March? How come we can't consolidate and consolidate? Not one person?
Not one person. You know, it just began to happen when these new people began to move in this, in the area. You understand? It's not for their convenience. The convenience should be for the people that, that are working there. If they want to come something early, tell them to go up to White Plains and get a voucher and vote, and vote absentee.
So can I ask a question, Mr. Logan? So why is the process longer if it's in November as opposed to March? What is the day? So you're talking about one day? So why is the day longer in November?
Because you'll have the villages, you have the senators, the congresspeople, the president, you have judges, you have all these people in there. And all these numbers got to be accounted for. All of this got to be accounted for. And you got paperwork you got to do to back, to substantiate your printouts. And you got to make sure that's correct. Everybody has to sign what they need to sign. And then you got to call into the county and give them the rows and the columns. Get the all the said and done.
So you're saying that having the village election is just one other thing that has to be tallied?
All of them's got to be tallied. It doesn't make no difference, but when you do it in March, you got like a break. November, March, there's a break in between things and what have you. It's not so much of a strain. One day for everything is a strain.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand that, but...
One day, what I'm saying to you, I'm, I'm a senior. I'm not gonna, I'm sitting for 16 hours, working for 16 hours. By adding your elections on to that that we already have, it's an additional work for me.
So I think the other thing is this past November, we had early voting. And so what was the impact of that? And I don't know.
Well, we had three, we had three, if, I take the 300 people that came with the early voting, with the 500 people that came during the election, we have 1,000 people. That's 800 people that, that's, that's two thirds of the, you know, that's 80% of, my book is full. So, you know, that's good, that goes to show you that the people do come and turn out for this, for the election. That means if we didn't have early elections, I already took on 800 people instead of 500 people.
Right, that's, that's true. And so I wonder how other communities that have their elections handle this because there are many that do. So I assume they have poll workers who are mostly retired folks too, so...
Well, I'm just saying to you, you're not going to get too many people that want to hang around until midnight the next day, you understand, doing additional work because you, because you're adding on additional work to what we already have.
Understood. So I'd like to understand how other communities that do this seem to pull it off.
I don't know, just the first I ever heard of it, you know, it's just it doesn't have their town election attached to the national election.
Dobbs Ferry does, for instance.
Yeah, well, you can check with. I don't know how, you know, how they do it, but to each their own. You know, if you want to really know how it is, somebody take a day off and come down there and work. And then you see how it feels. That's the only way you can...
Just, yeah, not here, but I have worked polls before. So I understand what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your service. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not at all in, I'm saying that if the issue...
Could you just identify yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lovely Phillips, South High Street.
Thank you.
Toccoho, which I love. I'm not in support of Mr. Logan's position. Not that I am a serious worker, a union worker. I was with the American Federation of Teachers in Washington, DC for 25 years. So I'm not adverse to politics or anything, but I want things that make sense. First place, just as a teacher and, and as a citizen, we realize that we have to encourage people to vote in this country. Among the democratic countries, the United States has the lowest percentage of people who vote. So everything that we do should encourage more people to vote. So that's on that side of it. In terms of Mr. Logan's complaints about overtime, then pay him overtime. If the job requires people staying overtime, that's simple to me, then budget for overtime. And I can bet you that everyone who's working hard will continue to work for overtime. So I, that, I will say that much in support of what he's saying. But I'm hoping, I'm in favor of moving to November. I think then it's, it's a kind of consolidated understanding of what's going on, your right to vote, and maybe more convenient for some people who are having to navigate whether they can get a babysitter or what all the problems could be with coming at two different times. So I would really encourage that. And the other thing, I'm not quite sure, is this to decide whether there will be a public referendum on this, or have you decided? I'm not sure where this is, or we're still thinking about it.
What will happen first is the board will make a decision, one way or another, to move the village elections to November.
Oh, the board. I'm encouraging some way of, of finding out what the public feels about this. We've got, Toccoho is growing and growing. I get a little nervous, you've heard me say this before. I'm not adverse to campaigning. Campaigning is the time for you to, for political parties to express their similarities, their differences, their points of view. Once you get elected, you work for the people. You're a servant of the people. And everything you do then has to reflect, not 3-2 politically, or, I like to see 4-1 sometimes, or 5, or whatever. But if it's, if it's a political, Republicans versus Democrats, or the other way around, I'm not in favor of that once you get into office. My feeling is that if we consolidate the period of time that the people of this community understand that this is voting time, make up what do you need for babysitters or work schedules or whatever, that the public ought to be able to make that decision, and then you should be able to follow through. I thank you for your time, and I love Toccoho, and I appreciate what you do. And I'm never going to stop saying what I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, may I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
So the original discussion was, was for a referendum, right? Not for the board to decide to move the election, but for, to allow a referendum?
Well, first, the decision will come to the board whether or not they, if we decide to put it on as a resolution.
As a referendum, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I'm not sure. So waiting for you to say whether or not we should have a public referendum.
It could, yes. Once we, we feel that we've received enough input from the public, I think that, well, by having this, this meeting and we have this discussion, we've had this open for two months right now. And we, as of right now, we're hoping to keep it open until the month of January as well, so...
You can say it sometime in the...
We're going to keep this discussion moving, yes.
We have it on TV.
Yes, anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Kara Cronin. I live on Maple Avenue. I've been a Toccoho resident for three years now. I wanted to thank my neighbor, Mr. Logan, for his service to our community, and I understand his position. I'm thinking, though, that as he spoke, if we move the elections to November, that would allow early voting for board members, would that not? So right now, we don't have that option, and that might help to alleviate the, the stress of the poll workers, which I understand is a major issue. I'm also, I wasn't in the last meeting, which is unfortunate, because this is an issue that's really dear to me, but I understand that there was an argument made that the people of Toccoho might get confused or kind of get caught up in the, in having the election tied to the federal election or the state elections. I kind of find that a little insulting to the Toccoho residents' citizenry. We're smart, we're educated, more educated than most of the United, uh, United States or State of New York. I think people can easily discern whether they are going to be voting for a local election or for a state election. I also understand that the argument really is people will vote along the party line. But as I think about the last two elections for Village Board, I believe that some Democrats and some Republicans were elected together. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. So obviously, people can vote for Republicans and Democrats in the same election fairly easily. And I think that they will, because I think that Toccoho inns are fair and open-minded and that they are not necessarily tied to one particular political party or another. I know that I'm not always a party-line voter. And so I think it would be in our best interest to move the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, board members. Seeing that we're on election, and I just walked in, I was just coming for curiosity, but I do want to remind the voters and the village residents, as well as town and two villages we have, that tomorrow evening between 2:00 in the afternoon and 9:00 at night is the fire board elections. And we're voting at the Bronxville Village Hall, the Town Hall, which also is including Chester Heights residents to vote there because of construction being, being done in the firehouse in Chester Heights, the American Legion post in North End Leroy Gregory Post, and our own community center. So all the residents, you know, just get out and vote tomorrow evening.
And Mr. Laurie, could you remind us what the budget is that is with the fire department and why this vote is so important?
Well, it's, uh, it's electing a one fire commissioner for a term of five years. The exact amount of the budget, I don't have it right offhand, off my head, because it has changed. We purchased three new pumpers, and we have a new ladder truck on order, which should be in sometime in September.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. From the lady in the...
Hello, my name is Joe Nisi. I live on Lawrence Avenue in Toccoho. I've been a resident for about 25 years now. And I've been following this decision that you'll be making in regards to whether to put a referendum on the next ballot to move the election of the local representatives to November. One of the pushbacks I see that has been raised is that it's going to affect some of the financial, it's going to be a financial impact on the poll workers, because then they wouldn't be working on, I mean, that one day in, in March. But from what I understand and what you just mentioned, Ms. Howell, the early elections now has been extended to nine days, so there's certainly enough money that's been made up for the poll workers to be covered for that one day that they'd be losing. And I think that it's really important that, that small financial impact that would be on that, on the poll workers, that one day would translate to the, we have 4,000 residents here in Tocco, I believe, 6,000, 6,000 Tocco residents, whose vote really impacts their financial, the, the impact of their financial situation here in Tocco. And from what I've read, I've read in a few different cities, Los Angeles, and it was a much bigger place than we have here, but, you know, they've, it's significantly increased when the elections have been combined, the local elections are put, you know, separately. We don't really get the turnout that we would like to have. And I think in the end, we're just looking for everyone to participate, whether they're Democrat, Republican. We just want them to come out, vote, tell us what they want us to do, and then we can find some guidance from their vote. And I think, again, this pushback about losing one day in March just really doesn't equate, especially now that they've got nine extra days of, of coverage and pay. And perhaps putting on a, putting a referendum out on the ballot will give us all the opportunity to make our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, back.
Hello, everyone. Claire Gorman, 24 Bronx Street. First of all, my thoughts are in line with my sister AFT member, Ms. Phillips. And I do agree, my personal opinion is it should be moved, but more importantly, I think the referendum is important because I think it gives the residents the voice in making that decision. And so let our people speak.
Anthony just talked about his election tomorrow.
All right, we're talking about my election.
Okay, wait, wait a second, Anthony. Let me just finish what I'm about to say, you understand? I'm trying to help you foremost, okay? With the bad inclement weather that we're going to be having for the next two days, we got a Charlie Carter not doing nothing. They should be going to the senior building to help to pick up the seniors and get them back and forth to the poll, and just maybe, you understand, you get a fairly decent turnout for the election to help you out and what have you. Right now, is, you know, that's sitting down there doing nothing, and the people are not going to come out in the rain.
Good point.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Anthony Fury, 3 Mainland Place. By any chance, have you contacted the Board of Elections itself to find out the process of it? Do you, do you go by a resolution to change it? Do you need state legislator to change it?
No.
Not just by resolution?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Good evening.
Drew Fortier, Sylvan Avenue. How is everyone?
Good.
I got here late, so I hope I'm not going to say something that's been said before. But actually, I was going to talk about the elections for tomorrow because...
Well, specifically, we'd like to discuss the moving of the march.
Right, but it's all, it's all connected.
Okay.
I've been here for 19 years, and it's the first time I hear about the, the fire commissioner's election. So, so when I heard about it, I was like, well, this is fantastic. So I put it on my calendar. It's from 2:00 to 9:00 tomorrow, which means I'm not going to be able to work in the city tomorrow. And then I was thinking about this because I was like, it's sort of emblematic to, you know, some of the issues we're talking about, right? It took me 19 years to find out about this election. How can we expect new residents who are moving in to know that there is this weird election in March? I mean, it's a great election, but you know what I'm saying? It's like, it's, it's just off-cycle. So, you know, I just wanted to mention that, you know, there's some people in town, travel to the city, it's difficult, like, we all know, we've covered that. I think a lot of people have brought some really good points, and I think none of them should be dismissed, but as far as I'm concerned, it's about prioritizing them, right? As, you know, the last gentleman mentioned, no one's going to dismiss that, you know, we don't want to give a paycheck to people in March. But what's most important, right? And for me, it's really about awareness and convenience. That's the only way we're going to bring more voters to the poll. So I think when we're looking at all these criterias, it's not about dismissing them, right? But, you know, just like what I would do in business consulting, I would probably write them on the board and, and say, is this a high, medium, or low concern? And, you know, I really feel strongly that trying to increase votership as much as possible should really be our top priority. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this?
Hello?
Good evening.
Virginia Marciano, 20 Winslow in Toccoho. I think that quite a few people are just missing the point about this. It's nice to get paid. The county has taken over the payments for the election, so this isn't a hardship on the village. I want to reiterate a little of what I said last month regarding these elections. I think moving this election is a really, really bad idea, and I have a number of reasons. One of the main reasons is that many of our little villages and hamlets and so forth, we have enough trouble making our mark and being autonomous on our own. This last election, I live in Toccoho, my ballot had 16, 16 columns. Now, I've lived here for a long time, I know a lot of the candidates and, you know, how the voting and everything goes. But it took me a couple of minutes to get my ballot done. And this didn't have any of the village elections in it. My ballot probably would have been 20 or more columns. And some of the voters were very concerned about how long their ballots were, they got a little confused. Some of them didn't even vote for like the last six columns if they had a long ballot like I did. And the voting machines actually spit your ballot back out if you undervote or overvote. And we actually asked a couple of people, you know, you didn't really finish your ballot, is this the way you wanted, or do you actually want to vote for the rest of the people? And a couple of people had said, you know, I'm a little confused, I'm kind of tired, you know? And we said, well, you know, we have people that can sit with you and help you finish this ballot. A bigger issue for me, though, is that we have, in our village and the other little villages, we have our agenda, we have our things, they're important to our village and also to our town. and also to our town. And if we get mired into the November election process, we are going to be just pulled beneath the waves. And I understand about, you know, convenience and all this kind of stuff, this is not really an off-time to have an election. This election has been in March. I've been in New York for almost 50 years, and this election has been in March for 50 years. So, this isn't something that's kind of a fly-by-night. And basically, Danny, to speak to the question that you asked, since last month, I've been doing my homework. I have talked to people on the board, I have talked to people who are voters, I've talked to people at the Board of Election, and gotten kind of a poll about how people feel about this. Not one person brought up moving this election, not one. Never even, never even came up. So, you know, I'm sort of reiterating what I said last month about leaving the election and the philosophy behind doing it. And also, I just want to show you this. I got an absentee ballot that was sort of laying around, but this is the one I want to show you. Now, I'm kind of redacting this, because this is not a piece of political literature, okay? There are two pieces of paper here, and I've covered it up, so you can't see who sent it. But this is a New York State absentee ballot that was sent to everyone who got this particular piece of political literature. So, I wouldn't even have to call the Board of Election or go up there and get a ballot. I got one in the mail. So, you know, people have been talking about how difficult it is to get ballots and this, that, and the other. Thing about it is, if you think there's a possibility that you might be traveling, or if you're elderly, if you have medical conditions or whatever, get one, put it in a folder and leave it at home. If you need to use it, you use it, if you don't, you don't. So, I think that kind of shoots us out of the water about, you know, about convenience. Another thing that was brought up is this early, this early voting. It costs a lot of money to pull off this early voting. Each station had two little iPads, and there were 19 areas where we had voting. We had two, we had four iPads just at the East Chester Library, and there were 18 other places that had four, probably four iPads, maybe even more than that. So, it's really, really expensive to do it, and we only did it, we didn't do it for every single polling place. We just, we did it for the ones that, that they decided to do this kind of a pilot program. Having early voting, I think, for village elections is actually, it's really ludicrous to do. And I really honestly feel that our villages are somewhat threatened to be overtaken in these larger elections, that we need to stay where we are, we need to do what we do. We have campaigning for the first three months of the, for three months for our village elections. I really feel that we're in danger of just being completely overtaken, just pulled beneath the waves, if we end up, you know, hooking up to the November elections. I think it's a very, very dangerous thing to do. And I don't know specifically, but I wonder somehow, how some of the other villages are feeling about doing it, and the ones who have done it, how they feel, you know, if they have done it, and their issues and agenda. I mean, we've got the presidential election, I know I said this last month, I'm so tired of hearing about all the political stuff that's going on already, and still, you know, 10 more months, 11 more months to go before the election. Anything that we would be getting in the mail, that we would see on TV? Because, I mean, we have our government station. As far as people not knowing about stuff, turn it on and watch it. It's, I mean, I've heard about the election that's tomorrow, I'm going to be hearing about the election that's going to be in March, and we seem to have an election every single year. So, I don't see any reason for people not being informed. I mean, if you move to Tuckahoe, maybe we should get a welcome wagon and put a flyer in it that has the information for the government channel that we have. The information is there. You know, it's not that we're trying to hide, you know, hide out or hide anything from anybody, the information is there. Sometimes you kind of have to be a little bit assertive when you move into a new place to get settled in. And, you know, coming to the board meetings, watching TV, this is how we learn things, this is how we find things out. So, I just would appeal that this is, I personally think it's a very bad idea, and I think it's something we really, really need to think very, very seriously and very carefully about before we decide to sort of hook up with the larger collective, as it were, in November, as opposed to keeping our village elections where they are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Just, I, again, I just wanted to respond to my neighbor who just spoke. A few things, I think it's very dangerous to move on the idea that we've always done something one way and we should continue to do it when things change. I am a millennial, I am the first of the millennials, I do not have cable. 35% of millennials do not have cable, 17% of baby boomers do, also do not have cable. We are unplugged. And, you know, new homeowners, new homebuyers do not have cable, and so I cannot watch the village board meetings as easily as you would think. I can find them, it's hard, it's not something I can just turn on. I'm a good Googler, because I'm a millennial, but it is not an easy thing to do. So, I think that's very dangerous to assume that we can just turn on the television and watch village board. These things actually cost quite a lot of money, cable. Also, in response to my neighbor who thinks it's really dangerous that we're going to get swept up in this political climate, I think the concern is that we won't know who's running and we're just going to vote on party lines, which goes back to what I was saying before. But I think about, the only candidates I ever meet in Tuckahoe are the ones that have come to my door. And the only ones that have come to my door are the village board candidates. The village board candidates make a point of being known, if they want to be known to us. And so, we're not going to lose them in the election. Those are the people who I go out to vote for, more than anybody else. And so, I just want to reiterate that if we are thinking about doing this, I don't see why we wouldn't just be Democratic and put it to a vote for the people. Let people vote for what they want. That's democracy in a nutshell. Thank you.
I want to support the young lady who just spoke, and I thought the presentation before her was excellent, except the word "dangerous" is kind of unsettling to me. What, what do we mean by "it's dangerous"? And the other thing is, could anybody tell me what percentage of Tuckahoe citizens vote? What is the percentage?
About 25%.
Approximately. Somebody must...
About 25%.
About 25%. There's my point. My issue as a citizen and an educator is to increase the amount of people who take advantage of the most wonderful exercise you can in a democratic society, and that's to vote. So, to keep doing anything that keeps us in the 25% level is not comfortable for me. I think we ought to look at these, in the first place, I am much in favor of going to the public to ask them what it is that would be good for them, in the interest of increasing the number of people who exercise the right to vote. I'm going to keep pushing that. Then it breaks out politically, whatever happens. But you have to take the risk. It's, I don't think it's dangerous, I think it's democratic.
I would like to dispute you, Danny. Two districts, 13 and 14, have combined, out of 6,000, they have over 2,000 voters for those, and we get 80% for both of those districts.
Yeah, you know, I apologize, you might be right, I'm just going back to a trustee election.
So, your 25% is off, and there's six, and there's six polling places, there's six polling places that's, that's in the community center down there, and two carries the majority of the voting power for the sixth. The second thing is this, what people don't seem to realize, there's a county saving $1. There's a $1 savings for the, for the switch. I mean, what is it, you know, with this $1? Is, I mean, it, you know, who is that helping? Who is that helping? Who is helping that $1? I told you, you take 10,000 divided into 1 million, it comes out to be $1 savings. And that's just random throughout the county of Westchester. Thank you.
You know, I, I don't want to take much more of your time up, but for new people who are just coming into this community, I've been in this community all my life, almost 71 years, and this is the way the election's been going. I kind of agree with Mrs. Marciano 100%. It, let's not say dangerous, but it could get mixed up. And I, I like what Mrs. Marciano had said, and I agree with it. And a few years back, we tried to put the Fire Department election in the November election. We tried for a long time, the state didn't buy it, then they said it was too late for us to put it in that year, then it would be too complicated for us to do it next year, so that's why this was left like this. And now, it's, it's, it's run by the, the people who, the inspector, poll inspectors are running it. Years ago, the volunteer fire department ran the whole Fire Commissioner election, and it was done in the village halls and in the firehouses. Now, it's done, we brought it together, and it's now in community centers, Town Hall, American Legion. But we tried, and it was hard, and it didn't work out, so that's why it's like this, and that's why the young lady from Sylvan Avenue said she never heard of it. It's been here for a long time, the Fire Commissioners' elections. Years ago, it was in September, and now they moved it because it was too close to Labor Day, they said, and it was too close coming towards the, the November elections, so that's why it's been moved to December many, many years ago. So, it's, what you're, what the people are trying to do, I understand it, but it's not going to come overnight. And I don't think like the people say, let's have the March elections all in November. It could get very difficult. There's, like Mrs. Marciano said, on that election, you may have the governor on there, the county executive, then you're going to have the village and mayors, you've got judges on there, it's, it's a big, big ballot when you start to fill it out. And if you start voting, then you have the referendums on there. It's a very difficult thing if you move everything and put it into one, one election. I personally like the way they do it now. We have our elections in March, we don't get mixed up with the general election, and I think that's the way it is. So, at that note, I'll leave you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it looks like everyone has to come twice, so I figured I would come back. I actually think that the welcome packet is a fantastic idea, by the way. That'd be great, every, every new person in town, you could all go personally knock on their doors, maybe not personally, but mailing them a registration form, information about who's in office. I think that's a great idea. If you need help, let me know.
I will.
And I'll be able to.
Most definitely.
But two points, maybe I misunderstood, but I just want to make sure, the March elections are only in villages, right? So, I, I know, I forget your name, I'm very sorry, but who came to speak said it's been, it's been like that for 25, 50 years. It's only in places like Tuckahoe, Bronxville, you know, bigger cities, towns, East Chester actually is, is in November. So, so it's really sort of an unusual situation for villages. And then the other point I wanted to make was about that it's costly for early voting. I think what, what is being asked is actually piggybacking on early voting, so it's actually not requesting additional early voting. So, but I think we all agree that the finance of it is not, is not the big issue, right? So, again, it's about figuring out what's most important, and what's most important to all of us might be different. So, I think the referendum is, is a great idea to tease that out. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'm obligated to go twice as well.
Yeah, two, two for Monday.
This is kind of embarrassing, but I've been here, as I mentioned, 25 years, I just learned something this evening about the Fire Commissioners' election. Brand-new thing for me to learn tonight. And perhaps it's emblematic of some of the information that's not given out in terms of our local elections. I mean, I found out about it because some of the people came to my home and knocked on the door, and that's how I found out about the local elections years back. But no one's knocked on my door about the Fire Commissioners' election, and as I say, 25 years, I'm just finding out about it this evening. So, perhaps that's some kind of an insight into some of the information that's not getting out to the residents that have been here a long time. And also, even though I hate to admit it, as an elder statesman, I don't find the ballot a challenge. I mean, you just go there, you look at it, you read it, you have your little Sharpie pen, you fill out the, you know, the ballot, the way it's supposed to be filled out, and then you submit it. I mean, how, what are we looking at? Five minutes out of a day? Once a year, or two, twice a year, whatever, I mean, you know, once a year? So, I don't find it challenging, and I would like to speak on behalf of the people that I represent, my age group, we can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the Fire Commissioner, there's signs all over.
Yeah, but, I mean, in fairness, you don't see the proliferation of signs like you do with other campaigns, you know, the village elections and, you know, and such like that. I mean, I think most of the information, I mean, and this is just, you know, off the top of my head, I think most of the information about the Fire Commissioner elections are available in our local newspapers, you know, like the East Chester Horizon, that's where you may see it. But, you know, by and large, yeah, I mean, it's one of those things. You know, as opposed to, say, the school board vote, you know, when you come over the Main Street Bridge, or you come into Crestwood, you will see a sign, a big, you know, orange sign up, or in the case of East Chester, it's probably a white and blue sign, right? That will announce, you know, the school board elections or the budget vote. But again, you don't have people knocking on your doors for the, for the budget vote and, you know, for the schools, so...
You do.
Okay.
Virginia Marciano, I have a question for you. Is a lot of this information on the website?
As far as...
As far as the Fire Commissioner, the election, who's running, and what's going on.
I went there last night, and I couldn't find it. It's not on the website.
Okay, maybe, maybe there should be some thought to getting somebody to become like a webmaster. I mean, for people who don't have TV, people who don't read newspapers and so forth, we need to get away, you know, have a way to get the information out.
Yeah, and I was even wondering, you know, how many Fire Commissioners are there? When do the, when is the cycle for that? I mean, so none of that information is out there?
Nope.
Well, for people who don't read newspapers and so forth, I mean, there needs to be, there needs to be some way to get the information out, because the fact of the matter is, the information is there.
I, I read newspapers, but I read the New York Times.
Yeah, and it's not in the local journal. And it's not in there either.
But it's in the local paper, so if you want to know what's going on in the village...
I would believe...
...pick up the local papers also. It's in the local paper also. So, like, to your point, people should pick up their local paper if they want to know what's going on in the village.
Well, it'll tell you, it'll tell you when maybe an election is, but there's a lot that you should know before you make that vote, and, and none of that information is on the website, so...
Well, then, some, somebody needs to look into that. That's a good point. A, a, a better way. I mean, I'm certainly not a millennial, and, you know, I do read newspapers, and I do watch television and so forth and so on, and for those of us who do, okay, and for those of us who don't, there still needs to be, there still needs to be something. I'm kind of going back to the welcome wagon...
It's a great idea.
...type of thing to get the information...
And, and none of that information is on the website, so.
Well, then some, somebody needs to look into that. That's a good point. A, 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 a better way. I mean, I'm certainly not a millennial and I, you know, I do read newspapers and I do watch television and so forth and so on. And then for those of us who do, okay, and for those of us who don't, there still needs to be, there still needs to be something. I'm kind of going back to the welcome wagon, um, type of thing to get the information out.
That's something that we should definitely look into.
Yeah, I mean, cause, cause the information needs to be made available. And for those who do not access the ready ways to get the information, I'm not necessarily in favor of spoon feeding everybody, but if that's the way that we, if that's what we have to do to get the information out, then that's what we need.
Well, and you have to understand that people are coming to the here from out of state, right? So there are states that do not have elections off cycle. So I think the welcome wagon would be particularly great to introduce people to the practices in the state of New York.
Yeah.
Not even out of state.
It's the village.
They come from Brooklyn or the city. Nobody, nobody actually understands that, that it's different in, in Tuckahoe. Um, I also just want to make clear that as people are coming forward and voicing their opinions, which we really appreciate both sides, that the board is not voting on whether or not we move the election. The board is voting on whether or not we put it on a ballot. So when you hear referendum and resolutions, people always ask like, what the heck is that? It's just basically we're saying we're putting it on the ballot for you to decide. So if you're, you know, like, like you said, you've never heard anyone say, you know, hey, I want to move the elections or, and there wasn't one person that you asked, then you should feel confident that if it's put to a referendum, that the village will say, no, we don't want it. So it's, it's a matter of allowing the villagers, we can't as a board allow everyone to make a decision about all the decisions we have to make. So for instance, the budget, we can't go to every village, every resident and say, hey, what do you think about the budget? Cause it's just too many people. But for decisions that impact you directly, like when you can vote, whether or not it's convenient, do you have the information or not, whatever the issues are with people, that's what we're really talking about. Do we want to put it on a ballot? That's what this board votes on. We're not voting that we're moving it to the, to November. We're moving on whether or not we allow the residents to decide that. So I want to make that clear.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we have elected officials to help us to do that sort of thing, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we get everybody on a two? Did I get everybody on a two for Tuesday or Monday? Okay. All right, that will bring us to our, um, miscellaneous business. Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up, yes. Put my glasses back. That'll bring us to our departmental reports and I will call up Lieutenant Zerolnick in place of Chief John Costanzo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to speak about. Um, the village of Tuckahoe was recently awarded the gold status from AAA Northeast uh, as part of their community traffic safety program. And, um, what's exciting to, to note about that is it's, uh, it's got a, a few components to the award. Um, first up would be like an education type of, of, uh, component, which is our safety programs, like the car seat checks, um, bicycle safety events for the pedestrians, school, uh, school open campaign and our, and our social media posts that we put on about all of our enforcements. And then secondly is, is obviously the enforcement side of it, like the Stop DWI or Click It Our Ticket programs. And, uh, a, a lot of this comes hand in hand with our traffic unit, which, um, has been responsible for, on multiple times throughout the month, going out and, and setting up checkpoints for pedestrian crosswalks and, and more lately, the commercial trucking.
Yes.
So with, with patrol, obviously we're doing that on a day to day basis, but with our new traffic unit, um, it's been a good component to work together. And it's, uh, it's really kept the village and our, and our community safe on a vehicle and pedestrian side of things. So we wanted to, uh, let our residents know about the gold award that we received. And, um, secondly, where it brings me to the winter parking regulations, uh, for those of us who have cars on the street. Snow zones, um, if we do have any precipitation, the snow zone streets, which are, um, red, red signage, uh, begins when snow or sleet, uh, starts and it ends twelve hours after the snow or sleet, um, finishes. So it's not once the snow ends. Uh, there's a little confusion, sometimes people think they can park on the streets right away when the, uh, when the snow has ended. It's an additional twelve hours to allow DPW to enter the streets, so that's important. Um, the winter parking regulations as it relates to three AM to six AM, which is most of our business districts, there's no parking from three AM to six AM. The village board extended that from December first to March thirty-first, as we've seen some of the weather and patterns change and, uh, caused storms to have early in December or even late in March. So that's kind of helped everyone, um, and it, uh, doesn't make us have to move cars and change some signs. So, uh, two pieces of information, just I want the residents to be aware of, watching where they park so that there's no unnecessary tickets. Um, and lastly, our alternate side has, um, been suspended, um, and that will resume back in the spring. So a couple of parking things for, uh, our residents to be aware of, and we're happy to, to note about the community traffic program.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That'll bring us to our superintendent of public works, Mr. Frank DiMarco. Walking like a champ.
Feel fantastic. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Um, just, just to, um, piggyback on what Andrew had said about the snow emergency parking. Uh, for those that don't abide by that, they don't understand the repercussions of not having DPW's full equipment and, and all our services, you know, brought to that area. You know, these, the snow parking areas are very important because, you know, it allows our bigger trucks, our sanders, to get to these locations to make proper turns, uh, without worrying about hitting cars or having accidents. Um, it, it's really no joke being out there in the middle of the night trying to get, make a turn and being stuck in a location where you're just trying to do the best you can and, and service the municipality. So I ask that people please abide by these signs. And if you have neighbors that don't, please just remind them that's important, that, uh, that you don't park in these locations during snow emergencies. Um, I, I want to touch on a couple of topics tonight. Um, leaf pickup, our piled leaf pickups supposedly had ceased December first. We carried it on for a couple more days, it's about a week and a half. So we asked people to stop piling leaves in front of their homes as of this past weekend. And they could bag their leaves moving forward. And leaf pickup will be Thursdays. So we're going to use the rest of the week just to pick up the remnants of leaves that are out there right now. So we ask you to please, um, don't place any more leaves out in piles. It becomes dangerous, especially during snow season. We don't want leaves mixed in with snow. It just becomes a little bit, uh, more dangerous, slippery and a little bit more difficult to, uh, to remove, especially during icing conditions. I want to talk about the, uh, DPW's annual toy drive. Uh, we have this every year. And this toy drive is for local children that are less privileged than others. Uh, so we ask that, please, if you find a gift that's wrapped, and you feel that your children don't need it, I don't want any used toys, I want wrapped toys, I want sealed toys from ages two to about twelve to thirteen. Uh, if you have a basketball in there or football, we could carry it over to fourteen years old. But we ask you to please, uh, give us a little something. Uh, the drop off dates, uh, will end December twentieth. The toys can be dropped off at DPW or the community center during the day. If you have any questions in reference to that, uh, please just let us know. Our, our sanitation crew while they're out picking up garbage, we have families that are following them and stopping them, handing them toys, so we could take it back to our toy box, uh, and I really appreciate that. For those that don't know about our new initiative, as of January of two thousand twenty, we'll be starting the food scrap recycling program. We are going to take this very slowly. We don't want to push it. We want everyone to know that beginning in January, we will have drop off sites. We have drop off sites right now at DPW in Tuckahoe. Uh, we left two green recycling food scrap containers outside the fence line. And we've had people that have been dropping off food scrap recycling already, um, scraps. And, uh, we're taking those scraps presently over to Scarsdale that has their program in place. We will begin, um, food scrap recycling pickup by a licensed contractor, uh, somewhere in January. But we ask that, yes, if you do want to drop it off, please do. I don't want to stop anybody, but it would officially begin in January of two thousand twenty. The starter kits are available at DPW at twenty dollars. Uh, and the twenty dollars includes the biodegradable bags that the food scraps are placed in and the containers that are, that the food scraps are held in. So it's two containers, it's a countertop container and a curb site container. Or that, you, you could call it curb site or that container that you could drop off at DPW. Whatever information you need or want to have, just please call us at DPW. Some of this information is presently on a Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee website, which is the T E S C dash Tuckahoe dot org. I'm going to have a quick link, um, on our website, hopefully before the week ends. So those that are not familiar with the Tuckahoe Environmental website yet, uh, I will have that on our front page with a quick link to the Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability, uh, website. Again, anybody have any questions, please feel free to call us. We are going to monitor the progress for the first year. We're not going to take it, we're not going to move it too fast. Drop off, we're hoping it's going to be only for the first year. After the first year, we're going to monitor the progress of this and we're going to ask that, uh, we're going to, we're going to shoot for curb site pickup after the first year. So that's our goal. And if you've got any questions, just feel, freely call us. Thank you. And I just want to wish everybody happy and safe holidays.
Thank you.
You too.
You too, Frank.
Frank, if I just may reemphasize, the dropping off of the food scraps must be in those biodegradable plastic bags, correct?
It's in the biodegradable bags, you know. We've been working with Scarsdale that has taken on this initiative for about almost three years now, we're going on three years. And what I found amazing to me is that there's no smell, there's no spillage, there's no, uh, people won't even know it's existing. Uh, if, if it's used in a biodegradable bags, is it used in these containers? Uh, this is nothing new to many municipalities. I know Bronx and New York City's been doing this for many years now. So, uh, we're looking forward to take on these initiatives. I know it'll be successful.
Yes, it will. Thank you. Mr. John Galuzzi from our recreation department, as well as our community center.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Just a few thank yous in order, uh, for our winter fest that was this past Saturday, this past weekend in Depot Square. For those in our community that came out over the weekend, um, you were treated to a festive day in Depot Square. Our area residents enjoyed plenty of holiday entertainment, pictures with Santa, the hay ride. Many got to witness our tree lighting ceremony with Mayor Luizzi, trustees Renee Howell, Gina Lee and Danny Lang. And some of the residents and children especially were captivated by a surprise visit from Princess Elsa, who's idolized in Disney's Frozen. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Tuckahoe Police Department, our Department of Public Works, and the Eastchester Fire Department at twenty-five Underhill Street. And of course, our, our winter fest sponsor, the Generoso Poe Foundation. Everybody worked together as a team, hoping to create a nice winter wonderland. An extra special thank you to Kristen Parneys, our rent-a-Christmas vendor, and of course Lou Moser's Cowlers, the Asbury Summer Theater. It was a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We were also blessed with, uh, good weather that day too, so that sort of helped us out. Now that will bring us to miscellaneous business. Our next village board meeting will be on, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Camille.
I just want to remind all of the, uh, residents that village taxes are due December thirty-first.
Oh, see, that's why I skipped over you then. I didn't want, I, I was trying to do you a favor. All right, so you heard it here, the end of the month, have those taxes in. Mr. Gersten. All right, thank you. David Burke, please.
Just want to give a quick update on, uh, what's going on at Village Hall. While people are paying their taxes, they're getting a little bit of a surprise and it's actually, um, kind of interesting. Um, we're actually having a film crew. Uh, they did a lot of painting, a lot, a lot of other types of work in Village Hall. So when you do come in and pay your taxes, you'll see, and it's kind of a little bit of blasphemy. Maybe the, the early nineties passed, I'm not sure, the color scheme, but it's, it's, it's quite interesting. It's growing on me a little bit, but sorry, it's not staying for all those people out there. I really like it. Just wanted to let everyone else, so the film crew is actually going to be interior Village Hall on Thursday. So we're going to take that opportunity for village staff to do a staff development day, um, down at the community center. So again, Village Hall will be closed on Thursday. We're going to do, um, some interesting active shooter training, um, some cybersecurity training and, um, a really kind of cool video on the future technology and local government. So it'll be a good day for our staff to kind of get together and, um, get some of the required training as well as some of the fun training out there. They will also be doing filming at the Village Library on this Wednesday. So the library is going to be closed this Wednesday. So just want everyone to know, library closed Wednesday, Village Hall is going to be closed Thursday. And hopefully they will be out of here and Village Hall will have a nice fresh coat of paint moving forward.
From the nineties. Thank, thank you, David. I happen to like those colors, just for the record. Okay, now we can talk about miscellaneous business. Uh, so our next village board meeting will be on January thirteenth, twenty twenty, again at seven PM right here on the second floor of Village Hall. The newly painted Village Hall there will be. So, uh, with that, it will bring us to our Board of Trustee member reports and I will begin the evening with trustee Andino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the public library, as always, has some great programs, especially for the holidays. Uh, on Thursday, December nineteenth, uh, they're having a gratitude card workshop, uh, where you can go out to the library and make thank you cards for people who matter to you. So if you're interested, it's on this Thursday at four PM. Actually, no, don't believe me. It's Thursday, December nineteenth at four PM. Don't show up this Thursday. Uh, for the, for the kids, they have, uh, kids holiday craft cookie decorating on, uh, tomorrow, actually, uh, four o'clock for ages four to ten. Um, they're, we're going to have bilingual story time with me and, um, Miss Elaine, the librarian, on Friday, December thirteenth at eleven AM for ages, um, infants to five-year-old. Uh, holiday stories and songs on December seventeenth at eleven AM. And they're going to show the Nutcracker Suite on Monday, December twenty-third at four. They also will have, uh, let's see, Matisse-inspired winter collage, um, an art class on Thursday, December twelfth. And the holiday books and tea, they'll, um, exploring a book, uh, one of Chai, uh, Tchaikovsky's and the Nutcracker. So if you can get out to the library, uh, do so. And there are some other, other programs. You can always go on Tuckahoe dot com backslash library for more information. I also would like to let everyone know that the board will be, um, presenting a proclamation to one of the residents, Grace Martin, who turns one hundred. I think it's December fifteenth or seventeenth.
That's, her birthday is the seventeenth, but yeah, we're going to present on the fifteenth.
Right? Uh, and we'll also, um, make December fifteenth or seventeenth, I don't know why I can't get it straight in my head, Grace Martin Day, whatever her birthday is. The seventeenth.
Birthday, yes.
Okay. So the fifteenth is the celebration, the seventeenth is her birthday. And she looks amazing, if you've never met her. Um, so that's it for me. Happy holidays to everyone, happy new year, be safe out there, and, um, we'll see you after the new year.
Thank you, trustee Andino. And deputy Mayor Lang?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Okay, uh, all right, so I put together something here. So the holidays can be the toughest times of the year, especially when the most cherished people enter our lives. I'm sorry, especially when the most cherished people in our lives enter our thoughts. We can't help but to smile, laugh, and in my case, completely out of nowhere, break out in happy tears. And that's truly what they are, tears of joy. It's strange because right after I somehow feel great, almost as if I had a visit. Speaking of visits, this has been something I'm trying, I've been trying to do for a couple of years. So we had a lovely visit at, uh, Four Union for a Thanksgiving luncheon. And I want to start by thanking, um, Irina for affording us the community room. And I want to give a huge thank you to Rosa Fiori for the beautiful decorations. Um, but most of all, I want, I want, you know, this probably isn't really relative to, uh, you know, our village business. But I think it's super important that, um, that these folks are acknowledged for what they did. So, give me a second. But most of all, I want to thank the families that couldn't wait to be a part, a, a part of this luncheon by either helping in the kitchen or preparing some of the most delicious side dishes that you've ever tasted. First, I want to thank the Cardens for their amazing mac and cheese. This sounds crazy, I'm going to keep going. I want to thank the Markoches for the wonderful baked ziti, the Moores for the, uh, cornbread and candied yams, Dal Fossis for the mashed potatoes, John and Marlene Smith for the wonderful turkeys, the Del Bracos for the sweet potatoes, the Murray's for the collard greens, the Coberts for the stuffing. I want to thank the Logans for their- Coberts for the stuffing, I wanna thank the Logans for their pineapple sweet potatoes, Rita Clement for her wonderful turkey, Blondie Serrano for the amazing rice and beans, and lastly, I want, thank my sister-in-law Nicole for the wonderful roasted vegetables. In addition, I wanna thank Norrie Nancy for heading up the kitchen, Smitty and Tommy for their help, and most of all, the help from the young people that served all our wonderful guests. This was a true demonstration of residents coming together during the holiday season for our seniors at Four Union. Thanks for letting me be a part of it. It was truly something super special. Thank you. Also, we had a wonderful visit with our seniors. Their holiday party was nice, and it was nice meeting some of my high school classmates' moms. Thank you for coming up to me and saying hello, that was very nice of you. And lastly, I just wanna thank the Eastchester volunteer firefighters. The mayor couldn't make their event, so my wife and I gladly jumped in, and thank you to the volunteers for making us feel at home. Happy holidays to all the residents, and thank you, and thank you for making Tuckahoe such a wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Howell.
First, I just wanted to mention that the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a Parents' Night Out this Friday night, so there'll be licensed daycare providers there from 6:30 to 9:30 at the Community Center. So the idea is you take, you know, advantage of that and go out and have a nice dinner. And the Chamber of Commerce is also having a holiday party, December 19th, at Leewood. Everyone's invited, and if you go on their new wonderful website, you can get all that information. As far as Planning Board and Zoning Board, probably the biggest thing that has happened, and that was discussed at the December 3rd work session, was that we received back the independent engineering report on the smokestack at Riverview, and the recommendation of that report was that the smokestack should be taken down. So that will be before the Planning Board and December 17th meeting. The daycare has been adjourned from both the Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings for this month. Other items that the Planning Board will be talking about will be putting a dog training and boarding facility at 145 Main Street, actually looking at a site plan for 14 to 16 Columbus for a fitness studio, which I think had been there, you know, a fitness studio was there before Pino's Pallet, if I'm not mistaken. So those are the items that'll be discussed at Planning Board, and then similar items will be, come up at the Zoning Board for the site variances for all of those. In addition to an area variance proposed at 22 Warren to add in addition to the rear property, variance to widen the driveway at 7 Cottage Avenue, and same thing for 122 Bella Vista, and that's to have in addition to a garage. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that on January 23rd at 7:00 PM, we're going to be having a meeting. I don't know that we've set the location yet, but it's to have Sustainable Westchester come talk to the village about the Community Choice Aggregation Program. This is a program that allows the entire community to buy into, and put out bids for demand for our electrical and natural gas. And, you know, primary purpose of this is to look for more sustainable sources of energy, but we can also bargain for lower rates. So I just wanted to make sure everybody has that on their calendar, and I'm sure we'll be putting out more information as time goes on, and just wanna wish everyone happy holidays and stay safe out there.
Thank you. That Sustainable Westchester will be at the Community Center. Yep, and that will also be televised, but we'll discuss that. I believe they're going to talk to us at the January meeting as well, sort of prep everyone. Trustee Lee.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. First off, I wanna congratulate our Tuckahoe Tigers varsity football team for an outstanding season. We made it to the state semifinals and lost to Mariah, a team that was way upstate. My son Justin and his teammates, the coaches, they played their hearts out this season. It was very sad for me, because I have been team mom for the past four years. All those boys were treated just like my own, and they all know it. They all come to me, they tell me what they wanna eat, they still do if they see me in the street, and I will cook for every single one of them. I have to say, they certainly were the best-fed team. Between myself, a few moms, Tuckahoe Station Cafe, they provided all their breakfast, and Pasquale's Deli, who has been a big help to us also with their lunches, I am going to really miss my boy doing what he loves on that field. Now we are on to basketball, and soon after, baseball, and that's what Justin would like to pursue in college. So now we wait for college acceptances. On another note, my girls, they cheer for Tuckahoe Senior Rec, the youth program, the rec program, and they competed the past two weekends, coming in first, in all three times that they competed. So we are all going back to Disney. So the kids are on a roll in this town, in this village. I can't leave out my son Cameron, he'll be upset. Cam is in his second year of maritime, he's doing excellent, and we are looking forward to him being home for the winter break. Okay, now on to business. The senior citizens had their annual holiday party at the Davenport Country Club last Thursday. That was such a beautiful luncheon. I know I say it all the time, but I absolutely love and adore our seniors. I feel like I have lots of nona nonos when I go there. Let's see, the center is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays between 10 and 12, between 10 and 2:00 PM. For weather-related closings, please call the number that's listed on their website, which is 337-8487, or tune into WVox AM 1460, or News Channel 12. Tomorrow, Fay will be having her jewelry table set up from 9:45 to 12:45. Please go check it out for some beautiful holiday gifts. She always has a huge display, right, Mayor? Thursday, December 19th, there will be a holiday lunch at the center, $15 per person. The center will be closed for the holidays, December 20th through January 1st. They will reopen Thursday, January 2nd. This past Saturday, we did attend the Winter Fest at Depot Square. It is one of my favorite events in the village, and I have to say, it was very special, being a part of the planning and assisting the mayor and Santa in the countdown to the tree lighting. And what else? With the holidays approaching, please make sure you shop at our local businesses. Being a small business owner myself, it is extremely, extremely important. And I just want to wish everybody a very happy, healthy holiday, and a very happy, healthy new year, and we'll see you in January.
Thank you. It's funny, you know, talking about that senior Christmas party, I had one of the seniors come up to me and say, you know, one of your relatives is here. I didn't know who she was referring to, but evidently, her husband is a cousin of my cousin, who, anyway, was married to my cousin, so it was just interesting that this came up at the, but anyway, my, my report will be brief. I'd just like to update the village just on these projects that are still occurring here in the village. Exit 3 on the Bronx River Parkway is open in both directions, so you can get off, you can get on the Bronx River Parkway. They are, as they had told us they were going to be doing while they can, they are now working on the side walls of that bridge. So they're putting the stone up that they had taken down from the original bridge, and what they did was, it's really, really something, what they did is they broke the stone down into smaller pieces so that they can use it on the side wall of the bridge, and I have to say, they're doing a fantastic job. The final road surface probably is not gonna take place until the spring, for obvious reasons, because of the weather. The Con Ed project that's taking place here on Main Street, I am happy to say, and I have purposely driven on Main Street at all hours of the day, and it's, yeah, we have to stop to allow traffic to come in one direction, but for the most part, I think any fears that anyone had initially, that this was gonna be a disaster, it's not turning out that way, thank God, knock on wood. On a more festive note, on December 16th, at Tucked Away, from the hours of 5:30 until 8:30, we will be hosting the volunteer holiday party, and that's for all these volunteers that give so much of their time on the various boards here in the village, just a way of us saying thank you to those volunteers who work very, very hard for the committees that they're on. And then on December 22nd, at 5:30 here in Depot Square, there will be a menorah lighting, and I invite everyone to attend. There's gonna be one of my all-time favorites, potato, guac, and I'm looking forward to this event, so I hope to see everyone there on December 22nd, 5:30, Depot Square. And I would just like to, as my colleagues have said, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, or however you enjoy these times that are so special to so many people, enjoy them with friends and family, and best wishes to everyone for a happy and healthy new year. And with that, this will be the second opportunity to anyone to address the Board on any item.
On a good note, thank you for your reports. I would remind everyone, especially after, in the evening, after the parking's over, to go and look at the candle, the peppermints, what do you, oh dear, I'm typing, of the decorations on Main Street, the candy cane.
Looks incredible.
In the evening, it is absolutely, it's iconic Main Street for this beautiful country. It is absolutely just stunning. I come down High Street, and I just sit there, I'm standing there with the cars sometimes and just watch it, all the way down to the village, and I'm very pleased. Then we have the Nutcracker exhibit in front of the Pope Building, which is wonderful. I do have a little thing about our little tree. I wish, and I'm thinking, since it's multi-culture, multi-colored, that maybe the four little smaller trees there, if you could light them up, it would give it a more, it would have more impact. It seems to me, you go down Main Street, it's fabulous, and then, this is not Pope, New York, this is Tuckahoe, New York. So let's enjoy the Pope exhibit, which is fabulous, but I think we need a little more oomph in what represents the village of Tuckahoe. Our tree is still in growing stages, I guess, so.
Yes, it is, it sure is.
Then light the others. The tree is multi-colored, so if you took the other four and made each one a different color, I think Village Square would be fabulous.
We have Christmas decorations, I believe, on the other trees.
They had the balls during the day. At night, there's nothing but a deep nothing.
You're right, it's, I was mentioning some to David last week. No, I.
Yeah, so please, just think about it, because really, I'm out there a lot at night, and I'm telling you, the tree is okay, but it's kinda undernourished, when you compare it to Bronxville and Eastchester's trees.
Well, it's still, it's still a baby.
This is said in love, you know, I love Tuckahoe.
I know, it's growing, it's a growing tree.
Yeah, but, so we help it on the way, give it some siblings or children or something.
You're welcome.
Happy holidays.
Same to you, same to you, thank you.
Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, good life, and go Tuckahoe.
Thank you.
This is my two for Tuesday.
Okay.
Claire Gorman, Bronx Street again. Sadly, I'm very upset about the loss of our, our smokestack. It's 100, it's 18, it goes back to 1850. It is a symbol of our industrial past, and really, the beginnings of Tuckahoe. And the worst thing that could happen is if we don't learn from this, and we lose other structures and things that are important. And I also think, because this was neglect of the Riverview for 20 years, on a condition that was part of theirs, that, and I said this at the work session, that it should be a $50,000 escrow, and they should have to do something. And to somehow create a historical marker, I had the thought, and I mentioned it to Mayor Luizzi, about across the street, on that strip of land at the parking lot on Main Street and Lake, have that maybe built up with maybe some of the brick from the, as long as it doesn't have asbestos, from the smokestack, and create a historical marker in that spot, and have it landscaped and all paid for by the Riverview, and maintained by the Riverview. Now that would come into your hands, because that's a village property, the Planning Board cannot make that decision. Am I right? Thank you. So I just wanna give you all a heads up, and maybe, before they consider taking it down, that if there's a spot to store some of the brick, to maybe come up with something. I'm not a designer of this kind of thing, but we have Dick Forliano there, who could probably come up with the language for, I mean, historical marker as well. And so I just don't want us to have this lost in vain. I hope we learn a lesson from this. And on that note, I think Dick has another idea.
Point well taken, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Same to you, thank you.
I'm Dick Forliano, I'm Eastchester Town Historian. I don't live in Tuckahoe, I live in Eastchester, but my three kids went to the Tuckahoe schools, and I love Tuckahoe. I'm not gonna, I am really saddened that that smokestack is coming down, but there's a broader issue here that I wanna talk to you about. But before I get into the broader issue, I wanna thank Tuck, the Village Board, and the mayors of Tuckahoe, who have done so much since I've, to preserve the rich history of Tuckahoe. But there are some misconceptions, and the first misconception, even if you're on the National Register, if you don't have local preservation laws, it can be turned down, torn down, demolished. And there's so much in this town, in this village, that needs to be preserved, but there is absolutely no protection. It has to be done by your village municipality. I have given scores of tours of the Tuckahoe Trolley for the 350th anniversary of Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe. We've published a book. We've done so much, but we need to do so much more. Now, the word dangerous was used before. If we don't preserve our past, we lose our identity, and we're not doing enough to preserve our past. Now, I will be talking, I hope to be talking to you a lot privately, but I wanna give you one example. In my opinion, the most historic edifice in the town of Eastchester is in the village of Tuckahoe. It's the Ward House, up on the corner of White Plains Road in Winter Hill. If Concordia, like the College of New Rochelle, would ever go bankrupt, and that's a possibility, they can tear down that house. Even, it's not on the National Register, but it wouldn't matter. The one-room schoolhouse is on the National Register. Tuckahoe High School is on the National Register. That means nothing. You need local preservation laws. And if we tore down the Ward House, that would be a desecration. And I heard at the Planning Board meeting, people were saying, oh, is it a landmark? Doesn't matter. It's up to the local municipality to pass a local law protecting your historic resources. And it doesn't have to be that you can't remove a shingle from your house. There are many variations of the types of historic preservation, but right now, nothing is protected in Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville. And it doesn't mean matter if you're a national landmark, or on a National Register, it can go. And we need different ways to communicate. Tuckahoe has done so much, and I work closely with Phil and Alice White, and the Tuckahoe History Committee, and Sheila Markin, and Eastchester Historical Society, but we have to look at new ways to get new people into our community to understand the rich cultural heritage of Tuckahoe. And I wanna thank you for all your support, but I'm also gonna say, we need more of your support, and we really need to open a dialogue, but thank you very much. Do you have any questions to ask of me?
Yeah, but we'll come back.
I'll see you, I'll see you at, I'm a volunteer, so I wanna get a free meal next Monday.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? And with that, no further business, I will make a motion for an adjournment, do I have a second?
A second.
Goodnight, Tuckahoe, see you next year.